Relationship between building facade setbacks and the streetscape. And the idea that with larger buildings, which can really only happen at the southern end of the corridor, that it would be worth considering additional open space in front of buildings for opportunities for public amenities, outdoor dining and things like that, and to get the scale of the building relationship to the street more appropriate. So that was essentially where we had started, looking at these larger parcels, again, to test the dimensional criteria at that scale to make sure that even the largest potential projects, assuming there could be some site aggregation, would still feel contextual for the corridor. So what we've done now, sort of now that the dimensional criteria are developed, is we have gone back just in the last week and looked at five specific sites that are sort of a representative collection of unusual sites that are everything from the town pantry site with, you know, the sort of strip mall setback from the street. We've got a couple of sites that have some interesting topography in the back. We have corner sites and so we're, but the most important aspect of this is we're looking at existing sites, not sites that are aggregated. So if an owner of one of these sites, you know, that we're looking at lots that are essentially ranging from quarter acre to a half acre. So I'm going to run through these five, showing you an idea about a test fit that would, that would work, would be crafted based on the current design guidelines and dimensional criteria. And then I'm going to show you the resulting visualization. So. And again, here's the existing aerial of the site. And here's an idea for a mixed use project that has retail on the ground floor, on the sidewalk of North Main with a residential lobby and parking behind. The upper floors, in this case, there are actually three and a half stories of residential above the ground floor mixed use. And you can see that this actually can be fully parked with parking on grade and under the, on the first floor of the building behind the retail liner. And it's, this is yielding 23 dwelling units above approximately, you know, 3,000 square feet of retail. So this is an FAR of 1.74, which is more than can be achieved today, which is more in the range of one to 1.25. And from a visualization point of view, you can see here, moving the mass of the building to the street edge and tucking the parking behind has an immediate impact on the activation of the street. This other building that's just dropped in here is a proposal for a building on that vacant site next to the town pantry. So you can get a sense for how the street can infill here. But I think looking down on the street in each case really gives you a sense of the scale of the streetscape here. We're across from the Bagel and Brew in this case. And again, these will be active storefronts and they're starting to work on the definition of the street. This is a nice aerial again, showing how that would create that edge to the existing sidewalk. We are proposing that all development is cited so that there's a minimum 12 foot sidewalk along the extent of the corridor, which in many cases now has sidewalks that are in the eight to nine foot range. So I think that is a good starting point. And in some cases with larger projects, there'll be a requirement to have it set back a little further, as I mentioned before. So that's one. And this is the, what, you know, the design guidelines might yield. You can't legislate style, if you will, but you can see here ideas about what the, what three and a half stories of residential might feel like above a, a commercial base. So going across the street now to the second site, the Bagels and Brew building. This is a unique site because it drops off a full level in the back here. So you have the two levels of commercial space that is behind the sort of street front component. And in this instance, we said, all right, well, this is an opportunity to think about an adaptive reuse of the existing building. And what would that look like? So you've got the retail lining on the street here, you see on the plan on the left. And if we were to bring in a residential lobby and put two levels of residential above the ground floor retail, so that you had, you're taking advantage of the street edge here. And this, you know, second floor would be repositioned and you'd add another floor on top of that. It might look something like this. And then you get a sense for the scale of that on the street. And as you get kind of down into the street, I think this is a pretty compelling image because this might be one of those places where all of a sudden you have, development might be happening just sort of as infill components up and down the corridor. But here's an example of what it might look like feeling more complete with sort of redevelopment on both sides of the street. And I think to me, the scale of it feels appropriate for the width of the corridor. In all cases, I've got a little box down here. I forgot to mention this on the first test fit, but there are a lot of reasons why these things can't happen today under the current bylaw. And in many instances, it has to do with the FAR limits. There are setback requirements. Parking is a big constraint at two spaces per dwelling unit and a higher commercial requirement. And of course, mixed use or multiple use development, as it's called, with greater than four dwelling units is prohibited currently on the southern section here. So there are lots of things that we are working towards in the language to allow this kind of mixed use development. Again, I would argue at an appropriate scale for the corridor. And here are a couple of precedent images of what, you know, a similar building does look like. You can see here in, in the center of Plymouth, on the right hand side, a three story with residential above commercial. This is actually a four story version. So again, appropriately scaled and Newton Highlands has another really nice, Lincoln Street has a really nice feel to it as well. So those are the two southernmost examples. And now I think I'm just going to continue and shift up to the north a little bit here to the D1 automotive site, which is a little over a quarter acre down the corner of Clark and North Main. And again, lots of things about the existing condition that are, you know, less than desirable from an urban design point of view with, you know, a parking lot on the corner of an intersection. You have an extended curb cut that runs hundreds of feet here. You have a one story flat roof building that's slightly elevated above the street with parking in front. Lots of things that make that not so pedestrian friendly. We had done an initial test study a year ago, looking at, well, if we consolidated four lots there, what kind of development could happen? I think you've seen a few of these images before. This is a mixed use version. We also had a townhouse version. But that was thinking about, you know, what could you get on a consolidating four lots? And we wanted to see what would happen if you just took the D1 automotive site and what, what kind of capacity and density could you achieve there? So this study again, looks at, I think, a nice approach to retail marking the corner and along the street edge here. A residential lobby in the middle, parking in the rear here with both underneath the building and perhaps some additional opportunities for parking along here. And that, that is adequate for the retail and residential uses. You then see down here, the upper floor plans, you have a second level with four units on it. A third floor that it would actually be sort of lost style story and a half. So this project would then be, again, a three and a half story approach to development on the site, mixed use development. You can see here an FAR of 1.41, eight dwelling units and, you know, 2,600 square feet of retail. And that can be parked as such with the proposed parking ratios for the southern section of the corridor here. And you can see open space and a lot of coverage and all these issues that we're, are helping us to craft what's the appropriate criteria to achieve the scale and character of development we're looking for. So this is what that project would look like. Sort of an aerial view again with the ground floor retail, the residential units above, eight units above. You can see, again, this couldn't happen today because there's a three floor 45 foot height limit. You've got front setback requirements, the parking spaces at two spaces per dwelling unit would require, and plus the retail would require something more on the order of 20 spaces. So that, that's become the real stumbling block for the redevelopment of some of these smaller parcels. And, and some relief from the FAR is what allows for achieving the density and the mixed use that is, was identified in the master plan as the goal for this section of the corridor. Here's a street level view of that looking south, again, with the three and a half story mixed youth on the right hand side. I think, and here's a precedent image that I've shown you before, which I think is suggests, you know, a very contextual architectural style that, that would only, not only have a lively streetscape, but the roof forms and whatnot would, I think, be logical as sort of a transition to the residential neighborhoods that you find to the west, once you get to Clark and to the north. So I think that's an exciting result. And then a couple more here. Andrea's Pizza site at the corner of Swanton and North Main. Again, we had done a larger test fit that covered a few parcels, but this is a unique parcel in my mind because it's a very prominent location. You have long vistas to it as you're moving down the corridor. It has a, it holds down the corner of an important intersection. It's across from Bellino Park. There are lots of reasons why this is kind of a critical node along a corridor. And the opportunity to develop this, you know, with a mixed use project, seems like that would be terrific for that from an urban design perspective. So again, you can see here a ground floor with the red boxes representing retail uses sort of wrapping the corner, residential lobby tucked behind, and then up above you have two levels of residential units, in this case, seven per floor, so 14 dwelling units total. The thing that's very unique about this site is there's a drop off in the rear of about 10 feet. So you actually can enter into a level below the North Main Street grade and right into a potential parking garage below the retail. And, you know, with a little bit of parking on site here, you can get, you know, approximately 17 spaces. And so you're sort of backing into how much can you then accommodate in terms of the necessary parking for residential and retail? Now, it's worth noting that once you get to the north of Swan Street, then the criteria are now calling for one, a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit and, and more for commercial. So that's, as we move away from the, the CBD and the commuter rail station, we're suggesting that the, the parking requirements go up slightly, but there's also an opportunity with the mixed use to have shared parking. So when you think about the peak times that parking is used for retail versus used for residential, you know, through a site plan review process, there may be a chance to get a little bit of relief here based on shared parking. You can see this is a, this, this concept here is about a two FAR, which again is more than can be achieved today. And here's a visualization of that. Again, a very prominent corner, so an opportunity for an architectural feature there. You can see the residential style above the ground floor retail, wrapping the corner here. And then this little extra image in the lower left hand corner is a, is a view of the rear. And you can see coming down, you can sneak into the garage down here at the lower level in the rear. So that gives this pride in that, you know, an advantage to this site here. And here's a street level view of that. And again, noting that this could not be done for many, many reasons per today's criteria, which now we've shifted. Once you move north of Swan Street, of course, we've moved from the DBD two to the DBD three. And there are, you know, constraints related to setbacks that get even more onerous. And you can't have retail uses north of Swan, even though there are many there today. And parking requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, I feel like this is, you know, is an example of how the bylaw would allow for the type of development that I think in a critical location on the corridor could really do a lot to enhance the. could really do a lot to enhance the public realm. Here's an example of a couple of buildings in Cushing Square in Belmont, you may be familiar with. Again, just a sense of the scale as well as related to Tropello Road, which is a similarly scaled right of way, maybe a little wider. But in any case, you can see the two levels of residential above the ground floor retail here. That was a broken record on that one. All right. And the last one is we wanted to look at a site farther north. This one happens to be across from the Russell Hill Building. It's 934 Main Street. And this site was interesting because the buildings obviously are clearly set back considerably from the street edge here. Parking is leaking out on all the way up to the sidewalk edge here. And it has become in front of the front facade of the building. And that's the kind of thing that we're addressing in the bylaw now. We're not allowing any parking in front of the front facades of buildings, which have to have a certain amount of frontage right, you know, within a certain distance from the sidewalk. So this is really going to be a notable change through the way sites are laid out. And over time, hopefully, we'll, we'll create that sense of a street wall that we're looking for. So just the quick feasibility study here was looking at, again, trying to get some retail on the street, access to parking in the rear and then four units per floor on the second and third floors here, yielding this kind of mathing that tries to get as much of the building up towards the front of the site and parking is in the rear. And here's another view from the south, looking northwest. Again, this test fit is yielding about a 1.27 FAR. And we are now in the section of the corridor where along the west side, north of Swanton, the height limit is now three stories. So you're getting a different, we're sort of slowly changing the scale that's allowable from south of Clark as you move to the north from four and a half to three and a half to three, which I think we should be sensitive to the surrounding abutting properties. This is another precedent example from Waverly Square, which has sort of that residential architectural feel to it, although in this case it is office above. Again, ground floor retail with the Dunkin' Donuts here and in a one of the nicer Dunkin' Donuts I've seen. But in any case, this is the type of, you know, architectural expression that would feel compatible with the surrounding area. And I'm just got two more slides here. This, we looked at this last time. This was kind of just recapping, you know, what the new MBTA zoning is allowing highlighted here in yellow as compared with what existed in the CBD or exists in the CBD two today. Lots of similarities. The big difference is the cutback on the parking allowable through the MOD three. But this is sort of the baseline that you, of the bylaw today, that when we're crafting this new bylaw to incentivize the things we're trying for, which are, you know, mixed use and and the residential density. This is why we have, here's a summary of where we sort of landed with some of the key criteria. And this will be the last slide and then we'll open it up to your questions. But so height, for example, as I just mentioned, on the southern section here, we feel like close to the CBD and the train station that getting density down there and allowing for a mixed use at four and a half stories. It feels acceptable there. And as you move up the east side to the north, we're reducing that to three and a half stories. And along the west side to the north, where you're really being a liner to the residential neighborhoods where the planning board is looking to do three stories max there. So that's not dissimilar to what exists today. Except there's a mixed use component to it now. And then I'll just touch on these open area. These are just what the test fits, we sort of backed into these, looking at many different sized sites. And in some cases, there may need to be an ability on some smaller lots to have a little bit of relief from that. But in general, these combination of open area and building footprint, max building footprint is what controls the developable square footage or the FAR. And then critical here now to the sort of this idea of creating preferred development pattern is frontage buildout. And this is really one of the most critical criteria, saying that you have to have 75% of your frontage on North Main Street built out with building footprint. And there's some exceptions to that on smaller lots, et cetera. But in general, we're really trying to get buildings out to the street and have the parking be behind. And that's a big tool for achieving that. And then lastly, parking. Some of you will remember when we had the series of public meetings, you know, in December, January last year, we were floating ideas that a lot of communities are, particularly with their MBTA districts are going to zero parking spaces per dwelling unit. And there was some pushback on that. And so I think we've we've landed on the 0.75 per dwelling unit at the southern end of the corridor, which is consistent with what you find in the CBD. And that's a minimum. So developers can decide if that's marketable or what, but that feels appropriate as a baseline. And then as you move to the north, north of Swanton, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're requiring a little bit higher parking there. Now today it's set at 2.0 per dwelling unit throughout the corridor. And that, as I said, is a large aspect or a big component of why development, redevelopment has been so challenging. So we're, I think we've reached a very nice compromise here in terms of these criteria. So I'm going to stop there, Taylor, and toss it back to you.
Thank you, Michael. I really, really appreciate all of that. A lot of work to get to get to where we are. But a part of the, what we want to do tonight is also hear from, from, from everyone else in the, in the community. What are people's initial thoughts? Or what are people's thoughts about, about, about this and the opportunity to ask any questions about the process so far? So I'm going to open up the opportunity for people to ask, ask questions. To do so, please raise your hand and, and I will call on you individually by asking you to, to unmute. Your questions will go primarily to, to myself and, and to Michael. And if we have no questions, I take that as meaning the planning board is doing an absolutely perfect job. And there is no, there is no issue with this whatsoever, and it will pass 100% at town meeting. There we go. John Shaver. You can, you can unmute yourself and hi, John.
Yeah, I was going to hold off on this question. But I was hoping other people would ask questions. The Climate Action Committee or whatever it's called is bringing forth a proposal, an energy conservation proposal to town meeting for, I believe, I refer to it as a passive house construction for multifamily. Are these two proposals compatible with one another? Are there any incompatibilities between what's being proposed here and what the climate people are proposing?
If that, if that stretch energy code does pass, it would, any new development and, and this passes, any new development would have to comply with the, with the stretch energy code. So yes, they are, they are compatible.
So you don't, you don't see any conflict between the examples that Michael illustrated and proposed and what the stretch energy code?
No, stretch energy code from, at least as I understand it, and I share an office with Ken Pruitt, our sustainability director. So, you know, is, is about building, building materials and energy, energy delivery. I don't believe that the design would change, the design or the dimensional requirements would change substantially or at all, depending on what the stretch energy code is. Michael, if you know more about the stretch.
I concur with that, Taylor. And like you said, it's, these are mostly issues related to building development and building envelope and things like that, and less so things that would be impactful for zoning dimensional criteria. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions from anyone? I guess not. Okay. Michael, are there any, any last words that you would like to, like to say? Okay, here we go. Richard. Go ahead, Richard.
Hey, Taylor. And the question is for Michael. I'm wondering if he's running the test fits, if he goes back and compare test fits under 3A, which just recently passed. I'm just being interested in seeing what the possibilities would be for, say, you pick a single site under, what's the possible build out would look like for the project was done under 3A zoning, if the project was done under as a single family by right and, or if there was a multi-use. An aggregate, you know, so just a toss into the mix, what would a, say a 3A test fit look like for the D2 automotive site?
Yeah, well, thank you, Richard. I mean, I think essentially I showed you that one slide that, that had the basic criteria laid out for what the MOD three would allow. And I mean, I think the big difference is there's an opportunity, there would be an opportunity to do multi-family as a right in the, in the MOD three. And you'd be limited to the three stories and 45 feet. You do have a similar parking ratio. So I guess, I guess I would feel like people would be using the MOD three really only if they were looking to do purely multi-family. So we're trying to incentivize the mixed use component by refining, you know, offering more flexibility in the, in the criteria. I don't know if that's answering your question quite, Richard. I haven't done any test fits specific to 3A just because that was a different consultant working on that. But I don't know, Taylor, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Rich, I, that's, that's a good, that's, that's a good, good suggestion. We might consider that for, for our next public or for our first public hearing. Comparing the design differences between what would be possible in the MBTA overlay, the MBTA overlay district and this. The biggest things are you're going to get smaller buildings. So I mean, from a use standpoint, you're going to get, it's going to be, it's going to be by right residential, but buildings are going to be smaller. So even with the, with, with the lack of first floor commercial in MBTA overlay, you're, the buildings are probably still going to be less units overall on most, on most parcels because of building size, they're going to be a smaller footprint because they'll, they'll have larger setbacks. And there'll be a height constraint in comparison. So I think, yeah, I think we'll consider how to visualize that. I think that's a good, that's a good story to be told.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what would the town pantry site look like, maybe possibly under 3A or under this new zoning?
Yeah, I, I like that idea. Let, let us, let us look into it. Hopefully we can have something a little bit better for you, a visualization of that for our public hearing.
I will add one more, I'll add one more thing, Richard, which is that there are different setback requirements under 3A as opposed to what we're proposing here in the mixed use district. So you would definitely get a different relationship of buildings to the street in the three. So in addition to the bulk of the building, I think the siding of the buildings would be slightly different.
John.
What is the reaction of the owners of some of these parcels? For example, Rich mentioned the town pantry site. And a number of these are owned by smaller scale developers. Do they support this? Do they oppose it? Do they not know about it?
I have been, I've been presently surprised with the support that has come from local property owners on, on this. Now, of course, that doesn't mean every single detail is, you know, is, we're, we're still working through the details with some of them. But we've been, we've been approached by three, at least three separate building owners, property owners on North Main Street inquiring about how they could develop their, their, their property using these new, these new guidelines. This, this new zoning where they realize that otherwise development would be either, you know, financially or technically impossible today. Looking, looking at this as an opportunity to, to develop, which is the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish, even the goal of what we're trying to do here. Does that answer your question, John? Rich, do you have another question or is your hand just still up?
I forgot to lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay. Yep. Last opportunity for questions, everyone. If you have, of course, questions can be asked afterwards. Can send them to myself, planning@winchester.us, or you can send them to the planning board, planningboard@winchester.us. You can email me directly, therman, H E R M A N, at winchester.us. Or give my office a call. We are still looking for, for feedback. We have two more weeks before a warrant article is due. We want to make sure that, that we get as much information, as much feedback and comments from the community as possible. So if we don't have any questions, one last chance. We'll sign off for today. And we will post this presentation to the planning department website under projects, North Main rezoning tomorrow morning. This will also be, this is being recorded, so we'll also share that out too. All right. Thank you, everyone. I want to thank Michael Wang of Form and Place, everyone who've been joining us tonight, planning board members who were able to join as well. And I hope everyone has a good night. Thank you. And I hope everyone has a good night. Thank you.